Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez.
President.
Commissioner Michael Pacheco.
Present.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Present.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez. Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
Present.
And Commissioner Isa Flores.
Present.
We do have a court.
Thank you.
What should I choose, a member?
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? They pass it, your choose. Pledge allegiance?
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Father God, we gather here today under your care and protection. Thank you for your loving kindness that never fails us. We thank you for those with us that you would guide our thoughts and actions to bring us, to bring you glory. Strengthen us and fill us with your peace. Amen.
Item two, proclamations to A, we have Kenneth Ines and his staff here. We're going to do a proclamation proclaiming national public safety telecommunications week.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. For the record, Kenneth Ines, Director of Public Safety Communications. So every year, the second full week of April is the National Tele-
Could you introduce your team?
Yes. So Melanie right here on my left hand side, Sid Lali, Jessica, this is Sydney, this is Stephanie, and this is-
Welcome ladies. Who's that?
This is Maya.
Who?
Maya, she is our emotional support doc for the discussion. M A Y A.
M A Y.
Great Day.
It's a great day?
Great Day.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, so she is one of, one of our, our staff members. She works twenty, twenty-four seven. She's the only one who doesn't have a deal.
Welcome everybody. Great to have you.
So the, the second full week of April, every, every year is National Telecommunicator Week, and that week is set aside to honor and dedicate some great moments for T C's across the United States to kind of feel appreciated and, and get a pat on the back, right? So we kind of have a saying in communications, not only are we the silent heroes, but we're the invisible heroes, right? And we have another saying is that whenever there's a hero in need, who do they call? They, they call nine-one-one, right? They call the dispatchers and the dispatchers give them the resources that they need. So we sit behind our, our consoles in a dark room, pretty much twenty-four seven, and we answer all those calls that no one really wants to answer, right? They're, they're not always good. And these guys here and the other thirty-three staff members that we have back in communications, they do that job and they do it with, with no, no request for a pat on the back. They do it because they love it, they do it because they're public servants, and they live for this kind of thing. So we want to make sure that these guys get the, the recognition that they deserve. This whole week is actually a themed week for the Public Safety Communications Department here in FAR. Today was Walt Disney, tomorrow's going to be Fiesta Tuesday, Taco Tuesday, so they're going to have some tacos.
Wait, go back. What did you say you're doing?
It's a themed week, so every day of the T C week, there's a theme to a specific day, so that they could kind of-
Are you guys doing something with the public or you're just announcing a topic?
Yeah, just announcing what we're doing within the, the Communications Department itself.
Oh, well, Vanessa. So should you be, I mean, it's nice that they announced a day, but shouldn't you do something? I mean, for like, I guess, what did you say, Walt Disney Day or whatever, tomorrow?
Yeah, yeah, for the staff members.
For the staff members, yeah.
Yeah, for the staff members.
Yeah, I, I would, I would encourage you to, when these things come up, I mean, we should be having something, not just by name, but actually at, at your offices, or if you guys want to interact with the public, I think that'd be nice for you guys, they want to meet you guys. I mean, they, I'm sure they, I know they called you, right? Hope I never have to call you, but if they do, they put names to a face and they can appreciate it. So in, in the future, make sure you talk to her. When you, when you do events like this, make sure you talk to her.
Okay, yeah, definitely.
All right, who's got the proclamation? Dr. Caballero?
Yes. Whereas daily across the nation, public safety telecommunicators are on the front lines, communicating and coordinating public safety services in the face of critical needs. From car accidents and medical emergencies to threats of any kind, these highly trained professionals answer calls for help and address emergent needs with skill and speed. Dispatchers, nine-one-one operators, and crisis communication specialists remain poised during stressful situations, reassure callers, and establish swift responses to any calamity. And whereas public safety telecommunicators provide essential services to their fellow Texans and remain devoted to their communities, their ability to operate telephones, radios, and computers support law enforcement, EMS services, and firefighters. The professionalism, empathy, and commitment inspire people throughout the Lone Star State. More than four thousand public safety telecommunicators work in six hundred emergency nine-one-one call centers, providing critical communications in the face of difficult circumstances. And whereas the Commission on State Emergency Communication works with the telecommunicators and local and state governments to ensure that Texans have reliable access to emergency telecommunications services. Each year, the Commission brings awareness to public safety telecommunicators and recognizes their importance to public safety. And whereas the City of FAR encourages all citizens to learn more about the impactful role these dedicated professionals play in our lives and to extend their appreciation to public safety telecommunicators, they ensure that help arrives swiftly to those in need. Now therefore, Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of FAR, Texas, by the virtue of authority vested in him and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of April fourteenth through the twentieth, twenty twenty-four, as National, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Mayor?
You guys should ask them, where's my bonus? Need it?
Next we have item two B, Proclaiming National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week. We have our animal control staff here, if you guys want to come up to the podium, please. Doctor Cynthia Gutierrez couldn't be with us today, she's out on the training, but we want to thank our animal control staff for everything they do for our community and their hard work and their, and their efforts.
So who's, who's going to be introducing your team?
You guys from left to right, go ahead and introduce yourselves.
Jos árez? Somebody goes by? You want to come forth between the ladies and gentlemen? Currie? Antonio? Sanaya? Before we get started, can you educate one of you, or more than one, I guess? Can you tell the people what do you do? Because sometimes y'all run into la gente, you know, and they'll like, ¿por qué crees eso? So you might want to tell them, just, you know, not a big thing, but in brief, somebody in English, somebody in Spanish, like, what do you guys do? Can you get on the mic? You can lower it down.
It ranges from anything from picking up animals in a traps to pertaining to the most common issues such as loose dogs.
Strays?
Correct. Beginning of cruelty investigation to livestock and any complaints relating to animals. Currently at the shop, we had a cha-cha laca.
What?
A cha-cha laca. It's a bird. And we have a tortoise and two goats.
You guys showed up to my house like, two years ago because I had duck. I had a duck with little-
Little ducklings?
Ducklings, yeah. And since I have a salt pool, they won't leave. And you guys told me I couldn't touch them, so I never, I couldn't get in the pool for like, two weeks until they left. But I would, I never understood that. Huh?
Belonged to him, the pool.
Yeah, I know, the pool belonged to them. At, at that moment, it did. Anyway, can somebody say it in Spanish? El que quiera.
Buenas tardes. Es un servicio que tenemos de, de contra animales por ver, que la gente se protegida. La mayoría de nuestro trabajo es a educar también a las personas que los perros estén vacunados contra la rabia, que es bien importante. Es casi siempre es el, el, de todos los días, avisando a la gente que estén vacunados contra la rabia, porque pues es una, es una, una enfermedad que le puede-
Very serious.
Very serious. Que puede transmitir de, de animal a-
Sí.
De perro a humano. Y es tratar de educar a la gente siempre. Y que mantengan sus perros dentro de su casa, que tengan, hacemos que tengan comida, que tengan agua, que tengan un refugio donde acostarse y todo eso.
Okay.
Es parte de nuestro trabajo.
So usted está responsable de levantar los animales sueltos?
Sí, andan sueltos, sí.
Okay. Todo tipo de animal?
Hmm, la mayoría es el, el, el perro y el gato, ¿verdad? Perro. Hay animales salvajes que se pueden estar sueltos, ¿verdad?
Sí.
Pero si son como chivos, gallinas, todo eso tiene que estar en un, en un área de seguro, segura dentro de la propiedad.
No te tocan los marranitos?
Sí, de todo.
Sí, verdad, I remember.
Teníamos dos chivos borregos.
Sí, I remember, yeah. A, a esa familia, todos muy contentos con ellos, so- You'd be surprised, so thank you. Gracias por lo que hace. Big mic.
Thank you guys for all your service, we appreciate you. Whereas the National Animal Care and Control Association has designated the second week of April each year as the National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week. And whereas animal control officers are dedicated to helping pets and people in the community every day, and whereas various federal, state, local government officials throughout the country take this time to recognize, thank, and commend all animal control officers for their dedicated services that they provide to the citizens, public safety, and public service agencies across the nation. And whereas every day, animal control officers put themselves in potentially dangerous situations by protecting people from dangerous animals and seek justice in case of abuse, neglected, and abandoned animals by conducting humane investigations and protect the welfare of helpless animals and pets from injury, disease, and starvation. And whereas animal control officers provide the essential functions of enforcing state laws pertaining to animal care along with the city animal regulations and protecting the public from diseases such as rabies and educating the public on the proper care of our community's pets. And whereas the City of FAR recognizes the animal control officers for the many dedicated and long hours of service they perform and encourages all citizens to join us in expressing their sincere appreciation for their service and dedication. Now therefore, I, Michael Pacheco, in representation of Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of FAR, Mayor of the City of FAR, Texas, by the virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of April fourteenth through the twentieth, twenty twenty-four, as National Animal Control Officers Appreciation Week. Thank you.
All right.
Anybody for public testimony? Public hearings? Right under City Manager's Report, we have Udi with the Special Events of Interest.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commission, Udi Gonçalves with your Office of City Communications. Couple of announcements, we have a few events approaching. So the first one is the native tree planting. This is to celebrate Earth Day. This is an event spearheaded through the Keep by FAR, Keep FAR Beautiful Committee, Sergio and his team with the Parks and Recreation Department and the FAR Public Health Department. This has, this is happening next Monday at the FAR Vanguard Academy Nature and Birding Center. This will be happening from six to eight P M. We encourage people to come out here, you know, to get involved with this Earth Day, and Sergio's staff and his team will be helping them, and they'll also have the little trees to, to be planted.
How many trees do they plant?
The last, the last number I got from Sergio's team was about twenty.
Is Sergio here?
Yes, sir.
Oh, sorry. Well, Sergio, they owes, they owes a statue unless it's already up, or a monument or something, don't they? When we made a partnership initially with them, they were going to put a monument.
For the record, Sergio, he's Parks and Rec Director.
Yes, sir.
We do have a pedestal there, it's been there for a while. The gentleman who was actually designing that marble statue-
That one?
Yeah, he retired, and-
There's no artist, just remind them that it is in our agreement.
He got like seventy-five percent done with it, he got injured and he was, you know, he was out for a while. So I think it's still kind of in progress.
Right.
The pedestal's there, it's been waiting, so yeah, I'll follow up with Vanguard.
Friendly reminder because some of the public do recall, they remember that, that's what we had said in, in open forum with, with their board members and the superintendent. And so that, actually, since this came out, they've been asking about it, so we just need to make sure we finalize that.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it, sir.
Once again, this is happening next Monday. If there's additional questions for those watching, you can always shoot us a text or give us a call through social media platforms. Our next event is She's My Hero. This is a program that we started about three years ago under Chief Pilar Rodriguez's leadership, and this is to really encourage, you know, young ladies to learn the skill sets and, you know, just boost that confidence and self-esteem through a course and a bootcamp that's happening strictly through female instructors. This time, we're having a co-ed. So this one will be boys and girls, ages six through seventeen. So again, for those watching, we really encourage them to sign up. This is happening April twenty-seventh, and we need to know ahead of time because we usually get the shirts. We get the shirts with their logos, with the year, and it, it's a great opportunity for them to come out here. Parents are very involved and they're always very excited about this, so it's that time of the year again.
Why are you doing co-ed?
We have Chief Pilar in the audience to elaborate.
Mayor Commission, we, we've had the public ask that the boys be allowed to participate. So we have three camps a year.
Yes.
One is co-ed for young, young men and women, and then the other two camps are, are for the young women.
So I wanted you to say that because, you know, the boys are important also. It's great that they have their day and that you should, in my opinion, you should leave it like this for the, the female, right? I mean, they, they should have, but the little, the boys should have theirs as well, so they all can have, you know, their moment. So that's all, I, I just wanted to make, make sure you knew that. They're, they're, they're equals, right? They're, they're important. So the, this is a great, I love the videos that you guys create. I'm hoping every topic you bring up, there's going to be something to match it media-wise, right?
Yes, we're going, we're scheduled to be there for coverage.
So it's called She's My Hero for a reason, right? And you might want to, you need another title, I guess, or, I don't know what you're going to call it for, for the young men, but the little boys need to have their moment also and their spotlight, that's all, so-
Absolutely.
You can do it this way this time, but I, and I don't know about them, but for me, I'd like you to separate so they can have their moment, that's all.
Yes, sir.
We will get together to rebrand the name of this camp. And this is the first one that will actually have the participation not only of our FIRE department, but FAR EMS and our FAR Police Department. So we'll have FIRE, P D, and EMS.
Okay.
So the next event we have approaching is, it's the FAR Warrior Race. This is the third year, and once again, we just want to encourage people to register. We're sticking to the same dynamics as the previous years, which is the one hundred meter swim, the six mile bike, the two mile run, and the obstacle course. Last year, we had about twelve obstacle courses. This year, we want to increase from the last conversation we had with Sergio, that's spearheading this. Once again, we really encourage people to get involved. This is a really fun event, it's happening on a Saturday morning, and we're also going to be ordering T-shirts with the logo of the FAR Warrior Race this year.
So all these participants in here, huh? Wow, you're all going to do it, that's really good. All right.
Show of hands of who's participating.
That's right.
Okay, so we're really excited about the FAR Warrior Race. And the next event that we keep pushing and we keep promoting is the Mother's Day event because this is right around the corner, and it's a great way to celebrate mom. We're going to have additional photo ops, we're going to have many things that we're planning different from the last event that we had there. We also have Anosa Soto in the audience, if she wants to elaborate. And we have a small promo that we've shown in the past, but again, we really want to encourage people to come out. So we can play that promo, and this is going to be at the FAR One Amphitheater.
This Mother's Day, join us for a magical night under the stars. Treat your mom to an unforgettable experience with a mesmerizing performance by the Vial Concert String Ensemble. Make this Mother's Day one to remember. Be our guest at a special edition of Night Under the Stars on Friday, May tenth, at the FAR One Amphitheater, starting at seven thirty.
So once again, if you don't have plans for mom, this is a great idea. Go have dinner and then join us for a magical night at FAR One Amphitheater.
I agree.
Okay?
Where's Vanessa?
Vanessa Soto, I believe she's here.
Mayor's Commissioners, Vanessa Soto, Special Events Manager.
Hi, don't hide. This is your, this is your deal.
I'm here.
You should be proud of it.
Yes, we are. So for this one, just so you know, it's a totally different show. We're going to include more musicians and Spanish and English music.
Great.
Expect a great show.
Okay, and the, it was nice before, right? But we always wanted better.
Yes, it's going to be better. We are adding photo ops outside of the amphitheater. So if you want to go out there and take pictures with mom, you're more than welcome.
Okay, and there should be more props, is that what you can call them?
Mm-hmm.
Right? That, that kind of stuff's going to be there, and are, is there going to be like the, what do they call the people here?
The chakouris?
Yeah, those people.
Yes, sir.
So are we going to be giving anything out to the moms that are coming through?
They're going to get a rose, yes.
Okay, are they going to get like, a snack or something?
Snacks, yes, and complimentary wine.
Oh, wow, okay. Great, great job. And you're going to be moving this throughout the City of FAR, correct?
Yes, our next one will be downtown here.
And then?
And then we are going to go to the D R C.
The D R C, South FAR?
South FAR.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. And we have two recaps. So the first one is, is an event that's been happening for about five years here with the City of FAR under code compliance, and it's called the Property Maintenance Program. So what our code compliance team does with some volunteers, they'll go out and they'll really help our community in cleaning their property. So let's take a look at the video, and we also have Mr. Roland Gomez in the audience if you have additional questions.
We're doing the property maintenance here, trying to get the elderly up to par. This is for all the elderly, sixty-five or over, anybody disabled also, doesn't have time, an age limit, and also for U S veterans, disabled or not.
I love it, I love it, I love it. It says bring money. How you keep your yard in the front is how clean you have it indoors. It says a lot about. I used to do my yard, but now I can't, so I think it's awesome, and they do a good job and they do it so quickly.
We have a, a signing sheet in the City Hall by calling four, uh, four oh two, twenty-six, thirty-three, and asking for that service, it's for the Property Maintenance Assistant Program.
I feel like you should keep on doing it, because it really enlightens me and it makes my day. It really does.
Is he going to go here?
I'm sorry?
Is he here?
Yes, sir.
Oh, you are. That's your department.
That's my department.
Mayor Commission, for the record, Roland Gomez, Building and Code Director.
How long have we been doing this now?
We've been doing it for approximately five years.
Five, right?
Yes.
You know, the first time we did, mostly the Commissioner, except Princess Mike hasn't done it yet, but almost everybody has been involved with this.
Yes, yes, sir.
You know, with those of you that go out there, you'll realize that everybody's home, no matter how big or small, it's their castle, right? It's their castle, and they're very proud of it. And so it, it's a wonderful thing that you do when you go out and you help our most needed people. I mean, mueve la maceta, mueve whatever is important to them, and you'd be surprised. First time I went, me rayó una señora, because I was moving a maceta, and she didn't want it moved. So I had to convince her that we're just moving it, but I'll promise I'll put, I'll put it right back. And so, and it was her husband's, who had passed away, so.
Yeah, we've gotten a lot of positive feedback with the program that we offer, so we open it up to everybody that, that qualifies for the program, sign up with us, and, and we'll be more than happy to go out and, and help.
How far, how, is there a list, or is there a waiting list, or is it?
We have a list in place, and what we do is every month, we try to pick at least three properties. We go by the list, we'll, we'll have our code officers go to different areas of town, follow the list of the people that have already signed up for it, and then we'll go look at their properties. A lot of them are cut by the owners, so we try to pick some that, that are in violation or close to violation. And then those make the list for that month, and then we'll have our, our guys go out there and cut.
Where's, where's Bieska, is he here? The judge or our legal team? Oh, hey, listen, sometimes we have our young people come through and they, you know, wind up getting in trouble for whatever dumb things that we used to do also. Instead of giving them tickets, you know, we ask them to do social or help out the community service, right? Without Bob, and this is one of those, you really should encourage those participants that we need them to volunteer for this, and, and then, you know, they feel good inside, but also we keep their records clean, because there's plenty of homes, plenty of elderly in FAR that need help.
I, I think a lot of the, Juan Bieskas-
Yes, sir.
One of the city judges here. We do have a lot of young people, eighteen, seventeen. We do have some minors, but seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty with traffic citations, and some of them aren't working. So we do send them to, a lot of them to Sergio at Parks, we send them a lot to R G V Food Bank, but this, we've even sent some, I think, to the stables.
Good. I remember we-
This, this may be another place that we can send young kids.
We also, is a requirement for you guys to document that they're physically there, so-
Yes.
You know, a lot of people misunderstand, it's, there's, nobody gets a free ride, everybody gets to go, so we should be documenting photos of these individuals who are actually there.
Correct.
Right, and, and there was a time when Sergio and I had talked about this, but some of the homes where the elderly live, the retirement people, some of them requested that somebody, because they're, they don't have any family. They either read a book with them, or play chess or checkers, and that would count also. But as long as everybody knew that it's, it's the same for, same measuring stick, so you're going to get videotaped or photo. You have to perform actually and spend time with these great people, but don't forget those, that population also.
Okay, very well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Our second recap is, this is a conference where the Bridge Team and FAR E D C's team was also present. We have a small recap, and we have Luis in the audience, if there's additional questions. Produce, Commerce, and Trade with a Taste of FAR hits center stage this year at Viva Fresh, a regional expo hosted by the Texas International Produce Association, this time in the heart of Houston, Texas.
This is an opportunity for us to collectively put, put our strengths together. So we have the eating- This is an opportunity for us to collectively put, put our strengths together. So we have the EDC, the FAR Economic Development Corporation, and we have the FAR International Bridge. Together, we have formed what is called the FAR Border Business Advancement Initiative. And what this means is basically our value proposition is strengthening ties for trade and business opportunities.
A conference with close to 200 exhibitors showcasing their services and products, making this event record-breaking with more than 2,600 people in attendance.
More importantly, we have more than 400 retail food service buyers. And that's really the gold here, right? Because all of these exhibitors are people that bring something to the Texas-Mexico Produce Corridor, right? Just like the FAR International Bridge, which is the most voluminous crossing for fresh produce from Mexico. Now, why is that beautifully important? Because all those buyers I was just talking about are gonna be buying that fresh produce. So they have got to be making the connections. They're the ones coming here seeking us out and we're the ones saying, come on, come on, we've got what you need.
FAR leaders shared valuable information with attendees, from trade numbers, business opportunities, to elaborating details on the new bridge expansion. All of this playing a critical role on continuous bridge exposure.
So welcome to the FAR International Bridge slash FAR Economic Development Corporation booth. This is the first time together.
From educational talks to keynote speakers and the ultimate highlight, delicious food tasting. FAR's Economic Development Corporation President and CEO Victor Perez elaborated on the importance of this joint effort.
It's good to see all the veggies, all the fruits, everything that, a lot of it comes to the, to the FAR International Bridge. But we're excited, we're talking to them, that don't cross the air, that they need to come to FAR. And they need something, a distribution center, a warehouse. We're there to help them out with that. So, uh, it's been a great experience.
It puts the FAR International Bridge, it puts the City of FAR in front of all the customers that are coming in from Canada, across the United States, Mexico.
And just like that, FAR wraps up yet another successful appearance.
The opportunities are here, but it is what we make of it. What are we here to do? We're here to bring more market share to the City of FAR, to the region, to the state, that's also going to, you know, fan out to the rest of the nation and into Mexico, of course.
Um, we have Mr. Luis Bassan. Uh, Mr. Victor Perez is not here, but if there's any other questions regarding the conference, he's here as well.
Actually, I want Cindy to come up for a minute.
Okay. Cindy Garza-
Commissioner, you were there on behalf of the, uh, EDC, correct? You went to this meeting? So Cindy, you want to introduce yourself?
Yes. For the record, Cynthia Garza Reyes, Director of External Relations.
Great. You want to explain to me why we have the EDC and the Bridge standing side by side at this event?
So as you know, when you look at the FAR International Bridge, you look at everything, it's accomplished. We're at a position right now where we have accomplished all of our major capital projects in terms of financial investment for our bridge. From DAP 15 to DAP 16 to now our bridge expansion where we were able to get a presidential permit in 60 days. These are huge, huge projects that we've been able to literally take and be successful in those. And now it's time to take that bridge and our development side and take it to the next level. It allows us to go back to basics. And what do we mean by going back to basics? It allows us to view what we have and where we need to grow in terms of bringing not only more crossings through our bridge, but also development as well. So if you look across Texas, this model that we're doing, it's brand new. There are a lot of EDCs and bridges that are not doing this. But by combining the FAR EDC with the FAR International Bridge, combining the experts from both entities together, you have a dynamic team now to where you can now go to the source. Go to the source for not only bridge crossings, but also potential development. Because once you have them there, they have the ability now to expand their footprint within the City of FAR and therefore increasing, increasing their crossings as well. So what you're gonna be seeing a lot of now in terms of the synergy between the FAR International Bridge and the FAR EDC is they're going to be going to Mexico, they're going to be going to the source. So the source now comes to us. We're in a position now with the bridge where we're no longer dealing with the middleman. We're going straight to the source because they're the ones that make the decision at the end of the day. And that is what Victor and Luis will be doing. So there's been a lot of great synergy between the two entities coming together and they have a planned strategy that's being executed, not only by them too, but also by their staff as well.
Wonderful. Good. Please?
Yes, sir. For the record, Luis Bassan, Bridge Director. So yeah, I mean, we complement each other. These are two separate departments, but at the end of the day, this is something that should have been done many years ago. Uh, we are one part of the equation. The EDC is the second part of the equation. Uh, just to put, make some, put some sense into this. When I first started working for the City of FAR, I was the Industrial Development Manager and I was the conduit between the EDC and the Bridge. We never had anybody on the ground, feet, uh, foots, feet on the ground or boots on the ground, getting a gauge for what is needed within our customers. How do we do business retention? How do we attract more? How do we do more? It's not just about crossings. When you look across the board and there's bridges, there's many bridges, everybody's part of a bigger plan. But it's not just about the crossings, it's about the developments, it's about the investments. When we're out there as a team, united as a collaboration, as we've been talking about, that's what it's about. Because we want people to understand that it's a team effort. I can only do one part. I have a certain budget. EDC can only do so much and they have a certain budget. But when we put the both together, there's so much more we can do together.
Great. No, I agree. I mean, you're, you can build a house by yourself or you can collaborate, right? It's faster.
Absolutely.
It's faster and it's more efficient. And you guys are, are leading the way. Most organizations, I would say, tend to work in silos. And they're, have their own, in their minds, which is not correct, they think they have their own kingdoms, but it doesn't work that way. There's only one FAR. There's only one FAR.
Correct.
Everybody works together with its parks, police department. There's only one FAR pulling for the public, right?
Absolutely.
For our best interest. And so I'm glad to see that you guys are taking it to the next level and not have that mindset of being, you know, a silo and actually breaking walls down and making sure you work together in collaborative fashion.
You know, FAR, yes, FAR prides itself on being unconventional. FAR prides itself on being the first at everything. So this is just another great example of how we're very unconventional, but at the same time, it's innovative. And we know it'll bring a lot of success to the city, as I mentioned, to the region, to the state, and more importantly, internationally. Because we are doing trade, we are crossing trade and doing business with over 90 countries in the world.
Wonderful. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to both Cindy and Luis. Uh, the next video is, uh, it's not a recap. We're actually going to have Mr. Jose Peña with our IT Department come up. Uh, he has a couple of announcements and a video to showcase as well. And that concludes, um, the information for City Managers Report.
Great, thank you.
All right, well, good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon, sir.
We have our staff here. Join me. These are a few of the individuals from our Fiber and Customer Service Team on teamfAR.net. Squeezing ourselves in. So these are a few of the folks that have been able to get off of the phones and off of the field to come in and, and, uh, again, I wanted to highlight them and, 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 you know, bring them up here to be recognized. Uh, I want to present, uh, our latest award. So, uh, this past weekend, Rogelio Martinez, our Assistant Director, uh, visited the Texas Association of Government IT Managers Conference. And, uh, they awarded three Excellence Awards. And, uh, this is one where they, uh, have awarded the City of FAR with the teamfAR.net project, the Excellence Award for the year 2024. Uh, we last had received an award from them in 2020, uh, with the, uh, Communication Center and the Data Center that we built. But, uh, here to my right, like I mentioned, Rogelio Martinez, our Assistant Director, Leo, our Fiber Administrator, Josué, one of our broadband network field technicians. Uh, Salvador, our Help Desk Specialist, Mr. Ruben, who is our Help Desk Supervisor, Eric, who actually today started as their newest, uh, digital navigator, but previously a Help Desk Specialist. And, uh, Jaime Nieto, who just, uh, this last week, uh, got his certified fiber optic installer certification at a training in San Antonio. And Kim, our, uh, Customer Service Manager.
Very nice. Congratulations. You guys are doing the-
Bring this award home.
As a team, you're doing exceptional work and I think we're almost at 40% of the city. And, uh, I gotta tell you, uh, everybody that I speak with that either I run into or HEB or elsewhere, or they just send me a random text. Uh, and a lot of people that would doubt the actual service you were gonna be providing, that's why they're texting me. Because, you know, they're apologizing for the fact that they didn't think or believe that you guys had any to get this done. And, and so they're actually very happy because they, a lot of people are buying the service and are very surprised to see how well it works and the customer service you're providing. And so, uh, you guys should be very proud of yourselves. It's brand new, right, to the, to the area, what you guys are doing. Uh, you're setting the pace and the public is loving it, no question. And now we're moving on to the next phase simultaneously to go after business as well, because they're the ones that are wanting it. The demand is pretty high. It looks like we're, how many, how many a month are we connecting now? The request? Yeah, it's like five or 600 a month, right? Before it was like 10. And so-
It started with 13.
Yeah. And so you, you guys are jumping leaps and bounds, but it just, it, it really is a reflection of what you guys are doing. Remember that. So you should be very proud of yourself and the team and what you've provided for the city and, of course, all the residents, right, the students. And now you're connecting them to the world with reliable and affordable, uh, high-speed, I brought the cable, I mean, it's incredible. And so you should be very proud of yourself and it, things are only gonna get better. And already we're getting, uh, I had never thought of this, but we're getting requests already from, uh, not only the private sector, but, uh, the business community saying, well, you know, remember you guys, City of FAR, you are public safety, you are the fire, right, the police, the EMS. And now you have this comm product, as they call it. But they're trying to figure out how they can connect so you can help them with their security, right? How to take care of them, because why have a middleman when you can respond directly by having your team or the comm center, I don't know how that would work, but respond to those type of emergencies. And you can respond to somebody who's either falling in their home or somebody's having an accident, because you're, you're, there is no middleman. You guys can go directly to the source. So it's, uh, it's having some unintended positive consequences that you guys are gonna read through awards. So congratulations to you.
Definitely. And one other thing I wanted to highlight, we do have another agenda item here, uh, this meeting. There's an update to our fee ordinance. Uh, a few, uh, about a month ago, uh, we got an agreement with Calix. Uh, so this is gonna be the latest service we get to offer our residents, uh, with Bark. Um, so, uh, we're gonna play a little short video in regards to what, to make the community aware what Bark is and what we'll soon be able to offer their, their families.
As a parent, you never want to see your child struggling with suicidal thoughts. But today, the threat is hidden deep within their phones. Suicide is the second leading cause of death for kids. And cyberbullying makes this threat a much more present reality. That's why I rely on Bark. Built by parents, for parents. Bark's award-winning dashboard monitors text messages, emails, and over 30 different apps and platforms for potential safety concerns. When Bark detects a digital danger, I receive automatic alerts so that I can deal with problems as they arise, while still respecting my son's privacy by not having to read through every single message. Bark even delivers research-backed recommendations on dealing with the issue. This helps me and my son work together, trust each other, and build a deeper bond. The screen time management and web filtering tools help me set healthy limits on how and when my kids use their devices. Plus, their data is always protected and private, giving me further peace of mind. To date, Bark has helped protect millions of children while detecting tens of thousands of severe self-harm situations. You know, we spend so much every month just trying to keep ourselves entertained, but I find real value by investing in my son's wellness and safety. Bark brings us closer together. Hey, can we talk?
Okay.
Very nice. Very nice.
So again, that's one of these, uh, projects that we just got started with and we're looking forward to it.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna have a big impact, you know? Um, bullying is everywhere, right? I mean, I, I have thick skin. So I get bullied all the time on social media, which I don't even have social media, but my friends send it and I, I laugh at it. But, uh, so keep it coming. So it's entertaining. It doesn't bother me. Uh, but I always won, I've always wondered, uh, you know, human beings can be very nice, but then you go to the side of the spectrum and we, human beings, can be very vicious and ugly to, to each other. I've always wondered how it affects, uh, you know, the younger generation. And, you know, recently we had somebody that I was involved in, Carol, who shot his, half his face off.
And, uh, that's one of those where, um, we're very glad that the City of FAR was given a grant by the Methodist Healthcare Ministries of South Texas. That our marketing team is putting together criteria that they're gonna pay for a thousand licenses for free, uh, for our families. So we're looking forward to that and hopefully, uh, you know, we can, uh, give these thousand licenses to very fortunate families that need it. And, uh, for those who did not meet the criteria, again, we do, uh, have the fee ordinance if they could afford it at a much lower cost than getting it directly from the vendor.
Yeah, so order the public to utilize it and talk to your family members, your, your friends. Bullying's a real deal. Uh, the young take it very seriously and they, they do act on it. And it's unfortunate that, uh, we get to those stages in our, in our lives. But we do and we can make a difference. So thank you, once again, to your team and thank you for putting that available to our public. So, uh, you want to get your team up here?
Sure.
Definitely want to take a picture with you guys.
Thank you. All right, Item Six, Consent Agenda. For the record, Items 1 through 5 will be recommended for denial and the rest will be for approval. Consent Agenda, all items listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and uncontroversial by the governing body and won't be enacted by one motion.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Item 7A, Consideration in Action If Any On Ordinance Extending the Boundaries of the Present Corporate Limits to City of FAR, Texas, and Annexing New Territory Into the City of FAR Consisting of a 6.154-acre Track Situated in Portion 71. Narciso Cavasso Survey Abstract Number 30 Being a Portion of South Veterans Boulevard and East Highline Road. Said Portion Being Out of Parcel 70B, 70C's and 70D and 79.022-acre Track Situated in Portion 71. Narciso Cavasso Survey Abstract Number 30 Being Out of Lots 47 through 55. And a Portion of a 40-foot Road Not in Use As Shown On The Resubdivision Of Lots 1 and 5 to 32 Inclusive Of The San Juan Plantation Subdivision Located At The Northeast Corner Of South Veterans Boulevard And East Highline Road In The City of FAR's Extra Territorial Jurisdiction ETJ In Hidalgo County, Texas. First reading.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item 7B, Consideration in Action If Any On Ordinance Authorizing The Issuance Of The City of FAR, Texas Combination Tax And Revenue Certificates Of Obligations Series 2024 And Levying An Annual Ad Valorem Tax Within The Limitations Prescribed By Law For The Payment Of The Obligations Setting Certain Parameters For Obligations Authorizing A Pricing Officer To Approve The Amount, The Interest Rates, Price, Redemption, Provisions And Terms Thereof And Certain Other Procedures And Provisions Related There Too And Continue Matters Incident There Too. Adoption on One Rating.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item 7C, Consideration in Action If Any On Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 0.2022-40-
Zero Point Dash Twenty Twenty Two Dash Four Zero Adopting Grants Management Policies and Procedures. Manual Adoption on One Reading.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes, thank you.
Item Seventy, Consideration in Action of Any Onordinance Amending Ordinance Number Oh Twenty Twenty Three Dash Thirty-Three Municipal Fiber Optic Fee Schedule First Reading.
Okay. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, it passes, thank you.
Item Seventy, Consideration in Action of Any on Resolution Supporting the Approval of the West Doffing Road Segment to the Designated Texas Department of Transportation Oversized Overweight Corridor.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, it passes, thank you.
Item Eight, A, Consideration in Action of Any Accepting the City of FAR Audited Financial Statements for the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty One, Twenty Twenty Two. Uh, we received a favorable unmodified audit, it's in your packet if you have any questions.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, it passes.
Item Nine, A, Consideration in Action of Any on the Purchase of Eighty Computers from Southern Computer Warehouse for the Amount Not to Exceed Seventy-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-six-point-eighty.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, it passes.
Items, Item Ten, A, Consideration in Action of Any Authorizing City Manager to Enter Into Fee Negotiation and Scope of Services With Quantum Consultants From El Paso, Texas To Develop the Comprehensive Plan Update For the City of FAR.
For approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, it passes.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Opposed, it passes, we are adjourned at four fifty-six, thank you, everybody.